You ready, Stacy?
I am ready. All right. On behalf of the Michigan Education Justice Coalition, the Student Advocacy Center, and the Ann Arbor School Parents' Intent on Racial Equity, we want to welcome you tonight to the Ann Arbor Public Schools School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Stacy Ebrun, and I am an Ann Arbor Public School parent and an aspiring math educator and one of the founding members of Aspire. My co-moderator tonight will be Perry Stone Palmquist. I'm going to let her introduce herself now.
Hi, everybody. My name is Perry. I'm the Executive Director of the Student Advocacy Center. I'm a proud parent of a Huron senior and another Wyheim kiddo, and I'm really excited to be here with all of you tonight.
So before we get started, I just want to give you a disclaimer. This is a C3 nonpartisan event. It is not an endorsement of any candidate. So tonight, we're going to discuss what's at stake in this election. We're going to ask the school board candidates questions so that you can understand their priorities and their vision. We're going to discuss ways that you can be involved in this very high-stakes election, and we're going to introduce ourselves and share our priorities around the state. We ask all of you to mute yourselves for the duration of the forum unless you're called on. One of the nice features tonight in Zoom is at the bottom of the screen, there is a little carrot icon. That's kind of like a triangle without a bottom next to show captions. That will enable you to choose the language that you would like to see captions displayed in for the duration. And it's translated to, and then this way it'll be accessible for everyone.
All right, well, I am happy to introduce a couple of our partners tonight. First, Aspire and Student Advocacy Center are part of the statewide Michigan Education Justice Coalition. Student Advocacy Center is the lead organization for MEJC in Washtenaw and in Jackson Counties, and it is really an organization all around the state of students, caregivers, school board members, educators, all coming together to really fight for the schools that our kids deserve. We are so proud to be a part of this coalition and hope that you will work to get more involved after tonight. But there's candidate forums like this happening all over the state. We had one in Jackson last week that was very enthusiastic. We're having another one in Lincoln in October and Ypsi, but there's other ones happening throughout the state. And in case you didn't know, Student Advocacy Center is a proud member of Michigan Education Justice Coalition and Aspire. We are headquartered right here in Washtenaw County. We have offices in Detroit and Jackson, and we have a statewide student rights helpline where families can call us when they're in educational crisis, facing expulsion, suspension, a special education issue. We really believe that education is a right, and every student is worthy of a quality education, and we're proud to offer advocacy, mentoring, youth organizing, and leadership opportunities, and to do things like this to bring the community together.
And similar to Student Advocacy Center, Aspire or Ann Arbor School Parents' Intent on Racial Equity is a group of concerned parents, caregivers, community leaders, educators, who are all committed to advancing racial equity within Ann Arbor Public Schools. Now, you're here tonight, so I'm imagining you know why school board elections matter. But school boards not only make decisions about budget, which is important, but they also make decisions about school discipline, the strategy behind the curriculum and the education. They hire and evaluate the superintendent, and so it's really important to participate in our school board elections.
I went, I went, sorry.
It's okay.
I don't know if I can go back. Can you keep going?
Yes. All right, so there are three open seats for four full-year terms, and there are six candidates running, including one incumbent. There's also a partial seat whose term will end on December 31st of 2026, and there's one incumbent running for that position. So what's at stake in the public schools with this election? As many of you know, our students continue to struggle with academic and social emotional needs. Despite the needs for mental health and supportive services, our schools have too few people and lack the financial resources needed to respond to the need. The families most impacted by inequities are often, are too often not part of district decision-making, and they often don't have a seat at the table or a voice.
So a couple of the priorities that Michigan Education Justice Coalition has that Aspire, that SAC share, that really came, by the way, out of listening sessions that happened during the pandemic with families and youth all around the state, is that, one, our schools must be equitably and fully funded by the state, so you're going to hear things like that tonight. That public schools must prioritize and invest in mental health. We've been working hard. Some of you have been helping with a supplemental budget to restore mental health funding that our young people really advocated for. That students must drive the future of Michigan's education system, and schools must create structures to bring in student voice and power. And that public school priorities must reflect the values and needs of the students, educators, and community members that they serve. So, one of the things that's at stake is school funding, and some of you on this call, many of you on this call have joined SAC and others around the state to really advocate that the state provide more funding for our public schools. One of the places that we were advocating and successful is something called 31A At-Risk Funds, or the Opportunity Index. This is money that is decided based on a formula of how many people are eligible for free and reduced lunch and other at-risk factors. If that Opportunity Index was fully funded today, Ann Arbor Public Schools would have an extra $11.4 million. This is funds that they could use to hire more literacy coaches, behavior interventionists. I know a few of you have been very concerned about those positions I got laid off, restorative practitioners, things like that. So it's so important that we keep working together on these funding issues for our public schools. So what do we need from our school boards, and really from all of you as well? Right? We need all of us working together. It's never going to work if just one community in Detroit's working on this, or that group over there. We all around the state need to come together as people who care about equity and justice and work on securing more resources for our public schools. We need candidates who are really engaged in how that money is spent locally. We need candidates who are committed to transparency and really having things like town halls with parents and caregivers to share information about the school's budget and really get feedback. We need candidates who prioritize using that 31A money that I was just talking about on behavioral specialists and mental health supports. That's what our young people are saying that they need. We need candidates who champion building an accountability team with youth, caregivers, community members to look at discipline data and really work to suggest changes. We need candidates who champion a policy that requires schools to develop and document a lesser intervention plan so that families know what the school districts are required to have lesser interventions to suspension. So what are those? That should be transparent, and there should be documented plans that are created in collaboration with community-based organizations.
And along with that transparency that we need, we need board members who champion Equity Report card that will allow the district to track progress on equity goals, including achievement and discipline.
No, wait a minute. Stacy, when's the last time we saw discipline data?
2017 was the last time we saw discipline data.
That can't be true. All right, sorry.
So we need candidates who are hungry for data and who are going to be transparent with it. And we need board members who will review that discipline data and achievement data disaggregated by race and disability status so that we know where we are, so that we can set a strategic framework to get to where we want to be. We also need board members who will give their time for, who will allow time for the public to comment. We need candidates who are going to listen to those public comments and take that feedback into account before decisions are made. We want board members who will approve Aspire as a board-approved group that reports to the board. We're still waiting on that. And as a next step, we need you to vote. September 26th is the first day that you can vote in person. That's Thursday with an absentee ballot at your city or township clerk's office. And October 21st is the last day you can register to vote online or by mail. Starting on the 22nd of October, you'll need to register in person at your city or township clerk's office with proof of residency. So please get out and register to vote if you're not registered. November 4th at 4:00 PM is the deadline to vote in person with an absentee ballot at your city or township clerk's office. And on November 5th, we all have the great honor to be able to vote on Election Day. The polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM local time, and if you need to register to vote, you can register and then vote at your city or township clerk's office until 8:00 PM. You can go to michiganvoting.org for more information.
Awesome. We should be putting some links in the chat, but also we want you to get more involved. Aspire has a Facebook page, SAC has a Facebook page. If you registered for this, you're going to be connected, but there's going to be a link if you want to click more specific things about ways that you might want to get involved. But I hope you think tonight about who are you going to talk to about voting? Who are you going to talk to about what you learned tonight? And how are you going to join with other voices in Ann Arbor to fight for public school funding, not just for Ann Arbor, but for all of Washtenaw County? Many school districts are struggling within our own community that impact us. How are we going to join together? So please think about not just the information you can take away today so that you can be an informed voter, but how you can inspire other people to vote, and how you can really get involved in the education justice movement in Michigan and really build the schools that our young people deserve. I do want you to know that all the candidates have been invited many times to fill out a candidate form. So if you are like, I still need to know like a little bit more, Michigan Education Justice Coalition has a survey that was created by folks around the state, and so you can certainly go to this link. We'll also put it in the chat and learn a little bit more about the candidates after tonight, and you can share that with other people as well.
Okay, so what you came for tonight is to hear from the candidates for school board for Ann Arbor Public Schools. So let me tell you about the format for that. We will ask a question, and it will be put in the chat. Candidates will have a minute to respond to each question. Also in the chat, we'll share the order for each question and the order of responses, the order for the candidates to respond. We are recording this forum, and we'll post the video on Student Advocacy Center's social media, so you'll be able to look back and also share it with your friends, neighbors, and other people who are concerned about this election. Okay. So our first question. Our first question is going to be asked by Turo, who's an 11th grade student at Pioneer High School.
Hello, candidates. I'd ask you to introduce yourself and tell us what experience you have that will make you an effective board member. What prior leadership or board experience do you have, and how have you supported children in the community in the past?
Should I go ahead? I'm Leslie Wilkins, a long-term Ann Arbor Public Schools parent and community member. I volunteered with the Carpenter Elementary School PTO for two years, and then the Scarlet Middle School PTO for five years, both Title I schools, serving as Vice President of the Board for three years at the middle school. Most recently, I've served on the PTO Council and their Equity Committee, and I love all that work, advocating for students and teachers, especially ones that needed something extra or needed some creative, outside-the-box problem solving, maybe needed something done in the background to preserve dignity for the person. I've also served on other nonprofit boards, including the Ann Arbor Civic Theater, and so I'm comfortable in a boardroom setting, and I work well with others.
Do we just, just to clarify, do we just start when it's our turn and then the person's on? Is that, or is somebody going to announce it? Just want to clarify. We just start?
Yeah, just start.
Okay, great. So, okay. So, good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining. My name is Ernesto Carey Harrow. What experience do I have that will help me become an effective board member? Well, I've served on the board for three and a half years, as I'm sure everybody knows. In that time, I was able to earn a Michigan Association of School Boards Certified Board Member Award, which means that I took about nine to 10 courses over those, my service to learn everything about labor relations, the contract, bargaining, to budget, to superintendent's roles versus board member roles. I think probably one experience that I have is that, and I think a lot of us would share this on this call, is that I have kids in the districts, and I'd care, and that when I see things in public schools that I don't agree with, and I think that are unjust, I'm going to say something about it. And I think that is really having that experience and knowing that you can advocate and speak up when it's your own family. I think everybody is in that way qualified to add, I've been a teacher for 20 years, and I think that counts for something in this educated community. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Glenda Wilks. I am a former Ann Arbor Public School teacher. I taught at Burns Park Elementary. I'm also a journalist, former copy editor at the Detroit Free Press, and I'm currently serving as a board member on Foundations Preschool, which has been a great experience getting things done as a team. I'm the former president of the Districtwide Black Parent Student Support Group right here in the district, so I know what it means to advocate for families who may feel as though they don't have a voice. I have volunteered with the Student Advocacy Center. I've also been a donor. It's an organization that's near and dear to my heart. I have served as a co-chair on the Washtenaw County 21st Century Policing Compliance Commission because we know how policing tends to impact family and people of color more often than not. I serve as an officer in Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, which is committed to serving our communities. I'm a mother of three and who have successfully navigated through the district. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for joining us. I am Megan Canouse. I am an Ann Arbor Public School parent since 2017, and I currently have one child in elementary school and one child in middle school. I have served on my elementary school's PTO as the enrichment chair, so providing extracurricular activities and supports to our classroom. I've been a room parent as well as the Hazley PTO Council rep, and in that role have been able to meet and connect with many other parents around the district as well. Because of all of my time within the classroom at my own kid's school and the connections that I've made on the PTO Council, I feel that I'm best fit to and have, understand a lot, although not all, of the unique situations that our students and families and teachers are facing currently, and I'm endorsed by the Teachers Union.
Good evening, everyone. Don Wilkerson. I'm a father of four in the district. My daughter just graduated from Skyline this spring. I have a junior at Skyline, and I have three or two, three-year-old twins that will be joining the district in a couple of years here. I bring financial expertise. I lead Risk Advisory Services for CPA and Advisory Firm based here in Michigan. I have a master's in accounting and bachelor's in business from the Ross School of Business at U of M. Over the years, I've been a dedicated advocate. I've collaborated on millage campaigns. I've been a longtime PTO leader and was the president during the transition from Northside to STEAM. I've been on the PTO Council as a leader, and it was the treasurer training expert for a number of years. I was a board member of a nonprofit focused on special education advocacy here in Washtenaw County. I am a proud Native American from the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians in Michigan. Over the years, I've shared my culture, helping to organize the Ann Arbor Dance for Mother Earth Powwow, and I've supported diversity and equity in the workplace as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eric Sturgis. I am the only candidate here who has been a graduate of Ann Arbor Public Schools, worked in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, and coached in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, and I think that brings a unique and diverse background to the board table because I see all sides. I talk to parents regularly, talk to students regularly, hear from teachers, and I've sought firsthand for my years of going through the Ann Arbor Public School system. I have been a college tennis coach where I was in charge of budgets and had to manage budgets, line item, and a lot of our funding and job performance was based on how well we handled the budget, and the independent audit showed that the board was responsible for this budget deficit. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. I'm super pleased to introduce a community leader and caregiver Patricia Davis, who's going to ask our next question. Patricia?
Hello, everyone. My question is, what are your top three policy priorities? What do you intend to proactively champion?
Let's go much for one minute. You know, what I'll say is my campaign priorities are pretty straightforward. Number one, I want to try my best to contribute and promote a student-first culture. I think in our meetings, we don't have enough student presence, and we definitely don't have enough student voices. We've tried to do that a couple of different ways. I would say all unsuccessfully because we don't hear them enough. My second priority is one that I'm sure we all share, which is financial stability and a little bit of financial transparency above stability even to know what we're expending on, what we're expending on what. My third priority is something I've been saying for quite a while, is that we have equitable decision-making. I truly believe that can only be done with a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. And my fourth priority is to maintain and uphold our commitment to sustainability, that includes maintaining our framework, making sure we have sustainable practices, and that we're holding our third-party vendors that we use, and we use a lot of them, to the same sustainability standard that we hold.
Thank you.
So my top three priorities are, number one, finances, ensuring a sound fiscal responsibility within this district. It's the board's job to review the budget submitted by the superintendent and to make sure the funding priorities align with district goals. This must be a priority, and if all trustees, including those seeking reelection, had made the budget issue a priority, there's a very good chance we could have avoided the $25 million deficit. Second priority is literacy. All children have a right to read. The science of reading is important, and I really want to address the issue of literacy within our district. We know that balanced literacy wasn't the answer, so the goal is to focus on literacy and to make sure that every child in our district is able to read. Thirdly, I want to develop strong partnerships and relationships in terms of funding, finding creative ways to find more funding for our district, because with more funding, we can do a lot more for our students, for our teachers, and our staff. As a trustee, I plan to be that board member and that leader. Thank you.
These minutes do go by quickly. I would, one of the things that I would like to champion as a board is to get another strategic plan process started in place, and it is quite a task because we need that, the town hall meetings, we need community feedback, not only from the town hall, but then we need to be collaborative with all of our education stakeholders, with groups such as yourselves, our teaching community, our member, our students, and our caregivers, so that we can create a plan and then get that into the budget so that we can make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable, and we are really, we are putting our funds where we, as a community, decide to prioritize them. So the fiscal responsibility and the strategic plan are my top two.
Thank you.
My top priority would be stabilizing finances. It's critical, and it's going to drive our ability to accomplish anything in the district, whether it's supporting students' needs, attracting or retaining strong educators with competitive wages, or innovative programming. Second, I think the board has been far too, or hasn't been focused enough on all students, nor have we gone through strategic planning to set a three- to five-year vision. So I'll work to make sure that every decision is made with all students in mind, and we'll push for strategic thinking and long-term planning. And last, but certainly not least, trust is broken in our community today. I'll focus on engaging and listening to each stakeholder in our community. I'll work to rebuild trust through listening, engagement, and transparent decision-making, focused again on students. It's important the community understands the reasons for the decisions that we make at the board level and has confidence in the decisions that we do make, and I'm certainly engaged and will want to be on the finance committee.
Thank you.
Yes, you know, my top priorities are, number one, you know, student success and giving students the best possible resources and opportunities to succeed, and with that is a fiduciary responsibility, which unfortunately, this current board did a poor job at, and that has caused students to suffer, teachers to suffer, parents to suffer, and the community to suffer. Equity is something that needs to be addressed in a more in-depth way. The Equity Committee was a start, but the Equity Committee, I think, could be expanded or revised where we're involving more actors, more input from community members, students. And then lastly, I agree, we do need a DEI officer, and that kind of goes hand in hand with the Equity piece.
Thank you.
My top three priorities are working toward equity, rightsizing the budget, and reestablishing trust with the community, admitting to transparency. One thing that I'll proactively champion, well, I'll proactively champion our students who are not currently being well-served by the district, our special education students, our students from historically excluded communities, some of our LGBTQ students. And another thing I'll proactively champion is our Title I schools. So that bingo card that people make for the school board meetings, one of the squares is going to be, Leslie keeps asking about Title I schools. That's going to be something high on my list.
Thank you.
Okay, our next question is going to be asked by our Pioneer student, Turo.
So my question is, what are the steps you will take to engage and increase the decision-making power of parents, caregivers, and students in district issues? of parents, caregivers, and students in district issues, such as the budget, curriculum, and equity plan? Can you specifically address how you will engage caregivers and students who don't tend to fill out surveys or regularly attend meetings?
Okay, thank you. First of all, I agree, we need to find ways to get to those whose voices need to be heard. Families can comment on anything, and by law, the community must have public hearings on the budget, but feedback is greatly encouraged and we could definitely do more. I believe board members must be available. But please remember, we can't necessarily resolve every problem, but we can certainly listen and attempt to do so. I know in the past, board members have served as school liaisons rotating from school to school to learn more about that school and its concerns, and perhaps the board could consider doing that again. We could also hold meetings at various locations that might be convenient for some parents to attend. I know with technologies, there's an option of meeting on Zoom. As the president of the District-wide Black Parents Student Support Group, I know that we actually used to go out to, to families. We had meetings at Arrowood Hills to be able to meet parents halfway. So those are options that we should definitely consider as board members. Thank you.
It's absolutely hard to get people to respond to emails or to a Google form when you are asking them to fill it out, just based on the experience in PTO elections. Sometimes only three people return their ballots. So I think there is a lot more of outreach that is, is then taken on the, the board and the administration to, and, and to the teachers, if possible. We can all work as a team to get their input. We can reach out to some of our partners who have aftercare programs, possibly meet parents as they're picking up their families. I know that for myself, as a Girl Scout leader, sometimes it's arranging to have a parent meeting scheduled in advance. That's going to be that last 10 minutes of your child's time there.
I think it's important to have various avenues to connect with the community and meet people where they are in the district. I'm a strong advocate for re-engaging, listening, and learn tours and getting back to our schools and hearing from the various communities across our district. I want to intentionally reconnect with the community, especially during times of change or key initiatives like strategic visioning or budgeting. Of course, that helps rebuild trust as well. I want to re-implement an advisory committee that engages stakeholders from across the Ann Arbor community, also hearing and meeting with parent advisory groups, such as the one that we're hearing from today. Personally, I will host regular coffee hours at different times and locations across the district to meet with our community and gain insight. I also hope to attend many school events and community events across the district. And I will definitely advocate for our students at the county and state level as well for funding and supports for our schools.
I think we've, we've heard a lot of really good answers. I think what's really important is that we're out in the community, we're engaging the community, but we're going to them, we're seeking their feedback, but then we listen and we also address concerns, points, questions that community members have, you know, for an example, when they go speak at the board meeting for three minutes and get no response, you know, that's something that a lot of people are frustrated with, you know, 30 people speak and then that's it. They, they don't really hear the board. So having, you know, those discussions out in the open on the board table where everyone's, you know, talking. The other thing that, you know, I think I, I do very well and, and as, as a coach, listen to students, you know, the students are there. They have an opinion as well, and a lot of very good things they point out, and I think that that's a group that's under, listen to. Thank you.
So it's listen, listen, and listen. But also collaborate with the community to develop action steps and then follow up with the families to assess the impact of the steps taken. I think one of the reasons that surveys aren't very effective is that we never see the results of these surveys that we fill out. So we spend, those of us who do sit down and spend the time to fill out those surveys, they go into some black hole somewhere. Sometimes the listen and learn sessions, we don't know if any of that information was actually shown or not. So if we, as a board, can prove that we're actually listening and taking action steps based on that feedback, based on what we're hearing from the communities, that'll go a long way. And then, yes, we need to think outside the box to come up with some creative ways to hear from people who aren't going to do the surveys, who can't get childcare to show up to meetings.
Some of the ways that I'll engage caregivers and students is to continue to be a core member of APIZA, one of our affinity groups. Also try to attend BIPOC lunches or BIPOC events that go on in the community, talk to leaders in our community, especially teachers. Teachers within the teachers' unions have different caucuses, like the elementary school caucus, the minority teachers caucus. You can also advocate at the state with MHAC on Lansing Advocacy Days. You can also host face-to-face meetings, virtual ones to connect with the community. I also served on the PTO sub-equity committee, so that's another way to engage the community. You can go to many of the events, like the new families events that we have when we welcome new families to the district. You can go to back-to-school barbecues at the start of the new year. You can go to AAD events, community events. Me, I get to go to work where I have taught and currently teach recent graduates, current AAPA students, AA parents, and even some AAPAS employees. That's what I plan to do because that's what I've done, all of those things in the past three and a half years of service.
Thank you, everybody. Happy to introduce Caitlin Solar, who's a classroom teacher in Ann Arbor Public Schools, and she'll be asking our next question.
In what ways do you plan to work with teachers and staff to ensure all perspectives are heard when making critical decisions about education?
So I think it, it goes, I mean, I'm, I currently, as a, as a parent, am, have great relationships with the teachers at my kid's school and have met many more throughout this campaign process. I think we will continue. I would continue to still talk to not only the union reps, but the feedback that we're allowed to be given via emails, conversations, and also any public meetings. I, my door is always open because the teachers are the frontline with the, and know what is happening within the classroom. And then I would share that with my fellow board members and ask them what they're hearing because I'm sure, as you've all heard, many of them either have connections from schools or, or also have kids that are currently in schools. And so we can share. I would talk to, I would be a collaborative leader.
We, we need to ensure that our teachers feel heard, are heard, and have a seat at the table as key stakeholders in our district and shaping the future of education in Ann Arbor Public Schools. Teachers are the professionals that know how to reach our students. They should have a voice in the content they are delivering to our students. They should be able to bring ideas to the table within our schools, to the district, be able to gain traction and approach things creatively. They should know that those, you know, ideas that are being brought forward are being listened to and followed up on. We've worked extremely hard in our community to ensure collective bargaining is an option for our teachers. I'll work side by side with our various union leaderships to make sure we are being fair and just and competitive to our teachers and their wages. But I do think the board also needs to hear directly from teachers outside of collective bargaining. We need to hear innovative ideas. We need to understand the culture and climate from a teaching perspective in our buildings, and we need to have that avenue as well.
I think it's important that we go out to the teachers. You know, I've said that I would want to go to a staff meeting, you know, announce, hey, I'm coming to, you know, you're going to have two or three board members at this, you know, staff meeting at Pioneer on this date to give teachers the opportunity to ask board members questions when they're, when they're in a required meeting already. I think that's, that's very important. I also think that we have to regain the trust of the teachers, you know. You're 20, when you're $25 million in debt because the board didn't do their job and then teachers get laid off, there's a lack of trust and that needs to be regained by showing that we can be fiscally responsible, that we want to listen, but also work with the teachers and build back that trust.
Back to what I was saying before, if the board is able to show that they're listening to teachers and staff and then taking that feedback into action items and then following up to see if those action items actually did what the teachers and staff wanted us to do. So if we're starting to re-establish trust with our educators that way, then that will hopefully go a long way toward it. Every teacher I've spoken with through this campaign and throughout the years I've been a parent say they wish the school board members were in the schools. So I know that right now there's a policy in place where a board member can't be in the schools unless they're accompanied by someone from the administration. So you can imagine that makes it a lot harder, but I'll, you know, I'll take that on. It'll be harder, but not impossible. So I'll find a way to get in the schools and see what's going on.
Yeah, thank you. I have a very good relationship, very strong relationship with teachers. They endorsed me in 2020. They endorsed me again for this reelection campaign. And one of the reasons why I'm able to have such a strong relationship with teachers is because I am one. So when we start to talk about teacher advocacy, I have a very good baseline being an active teacher who goes to the classroom every day, like all of our teachers do, to do the good work that a public school district should do, which is to teach students and let them be their best selves. Again, I've talked to many teachers over the, over this time about their advocacy through those union groups. I try to meet regularly with Fred and also Tamela, obviously our, our union leadership. One thing I will say, because it came up, is, you know, how do I engage with teachers? One way I will never engage with teachers is to enter a school building during the school day. I do not believe that that is a good thing for, for me to do. I think it's a disruption to school learning. I don't think that's a space for education, a Board of Education trustee. What I do believe is that if those teachers have something to the report, they have many avenues to do that, one through their union leadership, and they can always come and talk directly. So, thank you.
As a former Ann Arbor Public School teacher, I know the importance of having trust and being able to trust the leadership, including board leadership. And I intend to do just that as a board, as a board member. I will make myself available to staff and teachers as a, again, as a former teacher, I know the importance of doing so. But we also must respect the collective bargaining agreement and the boundaries that are associated with this process. So despite having the collective bargaining agreement, there are ways to meet with our teachers and to talk with our teachers, but we must let the process work itself out. It wouldn't be appropriate to encroach on the process for many reasons, and as a former teacher, I know this. It's complex. Teachers currently have representation under the AAEA. And I was a dues-paying AAEA member as an AAPS teacher. So we should trust that the teachers have capable representation under Fred Klein and Tamela Bell, who I worked with, and that their voices will be heard.
Okay, I am going to ask the next question. What experience do you have working with a large, complex budget? And what is one step you will take to provide oversight for the district's budget?
Well, as I mentioned, I bring, you know, the background of leading CPA and advisory firm. I, I've worked professionally with numerous organizations across industry and sectors to understand financial, operational, and IT processes and how to mitigate risks. I've worked with billion-dollar organizations, Fortune 500 organizations, state and local governments, many nonprofits, to understand their processes related to governance, how to set the tone at the top, how to go through budgeting and financial reporting. I help organizations fix and remediate broken processes. I work daily on budget stewardship and financial responsibility here at Raymond. It's part of my job of leading the growth of our practice and being a good steward to the, you know, my team members and ensuring they're supported as well. I'll work on understanding every detail on the budget. A thorough understanding of the constraints will allow us how to think creatively and find new avenues for increased revenue.
So I've worked with budgets as a coach. Also, I was a summer club director where I was responsible for budget, but also managing staff, hiring staff, firing staff. So I think one thing that I would like to say and kind of point out is that, you know, we need to be transparent with the budget. We need to continue to monitor it throughout the year, continue to make updates, but also the transparency is, is, is key here because again, it goes to the community trust. And I think all of us would probably, maybe, you know, with the exception of some, wouldn't, but would want to take, you know, some school board budgeting classes and learn and listen. But I think, you know, the key is to, to continue to work with the budget throughout the year and not get caught up in resolutions that don't have anything to do with the school district or budget.
As far as experience, before the job that I currently hold, I was a financial analyst for municipal ratings, bond ratings firm. And my job was to look at the financial situation of different municipalities, cities and counties and things like that, road commissions, and see what their financial health was and rate it and see what the future would look like for that. So I hope to draw on some of those skills that I used in that job. I don't have experience with enormous budgets, like the school district one, but one thing that, one step that I will take to provide oversight is, again, to go back and be that squeaky wheel for our Title I schools. So when budget items are presented, when budget decisions are being made, I want to make sure that it's, you know, each decision that's made, is this going to affect our Title I schools in a way, you know, worse for other, than other schools?
Yeah, you know, as I said earlier, I've taken MASP courses on the budget, school finance, how the money comes in, where it's spent. This is the biggest budget I clearly have had experience working in and working with. But whether you're working with a small budget or a family budget or, you know, a departmental budget, in order to make sense of that budget, you need the information. And that's where our district is, is a little lacking in the transparency element. Anybody can go out to the AAPS school and look at our financial reports per month. And you could see with the data was cashed, what it was expended with a little itemized detail. What you don't know on that report is what bucket it came out of. And I don't know how anybody could ever look at that budget and make sense of it. And there seems to be this feeling around the community that me, as a board member, as a sitting board member, that we have a lot more information than the public, public does, and that's just simply not true. All right, so the detail of the budget is the same detail that's put onto the website. And so to, to say that it's one or two or that it's the board's fault for all of the budget, yes, I'll, I'll agree that maybe pressing and asking for more transparency is the fault, but you have to have the information to be able to say or move or stand behind anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for this question. So as a journalist, I know how to ask some tough questions and to really dig deep to try to get to answers. So when it comes to a complex budget, I'm not, I, I don't have a lot of training with complex budgets. However, the Michigan Association of School Boards offers robust training on school finances. And I plan to earn the Michigan Association of School Boards Finance Certification. And I believe that one of the reasons the district is currently in this fiscal crisis is because some trustees opted not to participate in these vital training opportunities. They're right there, available for us to use. So I believe we should work together as a board to get this certification and to commit to taking these classes together and to commit to taking these classes together for the good of our district. And we should consider holding weekly meetings with the superintendent and the district finance representatives to stay well informed about the district's financial situation. Thank you.
Okay, so my past job experience, I was the buyer for Borders Group. And some of my subcategories had budgets and, and sales goals of a hundred million dollars and more, while other subcategories were ten million dollars. No matter what the categories were, everything had to roll up to a plan that I was responsible for. And I, not only forecasting based on upcoming trends, but also I had to regularly represent that then to my superiors and then regularly review the weekly performance. And then on a monthly or seasonal review, also report that back into my superiors and make adjustments to my forecast, to my sales goals, to my plans. Or if we were going to exceed, again, you're still making those adjustments and you're communicating them out. That's something that we've lacked. I also attended already the board retreat on, that had some of the financial training that was this past August.
Okay, so our next question is going to come from Patricia Davis.
All right. My question is, what shall be your school's top spending priorities in its budget? And alternatively, what should not be prioritized or what should be devised from in the budget?
Thank you. Prioritized to me is, is supporting the students and equity and making sure that Title IX schools are adequately staffed, adequately funded, in that we're, we're always supporting our students in the, in the budget. Number two, I think also making sure that the special education is up to par and that we are hiring people that are, want to be there, that want to teach that, not forcing people to do it who haven't done in 10 years because we are in a budget crisis. What shouldn't be in the budget, you know, I would have to see what the items are individually before I'd be comfortable excluding anything. But at this point, you know, students' equity and making sure that we don't get into another budget deficit.
Thank you. My spending priorities are going to be all about our educators. So making sure that any cuts that we had to make are restored, get back to step increases for our teachers that they've been severely lacking for years and years and years. That will, that'll be the spending priority. It's the top, it's the top category in the budget is the employees of the school. But that's, there's a reason for that. That's, that's who runs our school. As far as things to be divested from, it's a, that's a tough question. But if there's anything about standardized education, I know that comes from a, or standardized testing. I know that comes from a different bucket, but if there's any way we can de-prioritize that, I would do that. Those are my thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, just, just to put it in context for me, you know, public school education is a little broken in its funding. I think everyone can say that. And I, I wouldn't advocate for, for pulling away for anything, but I will say it like this. I would prioritize two things in spending. Number one is for us to move away as far as we can from a balanced literacy approach to a structured one and to introduce into our earliest elementary school readers more phonics and more decodable books. I think that is a literacy crisis that is happening here. It's happening across our country, one that has, that people are willing to turn their back to, but we can't anymore. We need to make sure that we're, we're giving our kids phonics and structured literacy skills so that they can get back to grade level on their reading and writing. The second thing I would say, and I think everyone should agree with this, I don't know if they do, but mental health wraparound services for our students, that is something we need, especially now more than ever with our mental, mental health funding a little bit at risk. That is something that we need to prioritize locally if it won't be prioritized at the state home.
Thank you.
Okay, in terms of top spending priorities, I'm not comfortable saying what we should divest from at this point, since I don't know all the details. But I would want to see us spending more on students' social, emotional wellbeing and providing the support needed for students. I don't know if that means more counselors, but whatever support is needed, we need to invest in it. Literacy is a top priority, in my opinion. Again, as a former teacher, I believe that, that we need to look at the science of reading and see what works for all students. Students who may have dyslexia, students who, where balanced literacy isn't working for those particular students, we need to examine that. I also want to look at school safety. I believe that Oxford was a wake-up call. There's an effort. There was an effort to install cameras on our buses, but one of our trustees apparently voted against it. So I would like to revisit that. And I also believe that we need to invest in highly qualified teachers. They should be paid for what they are worth while also being fiscally responsible as a district. It's a challenge, but I really believe it can be done.
Thank you.
So our school's top priorities, as we said, and, and I alluded to, the teachers are and staff are like eighty percent of our general fund. And we need to continue to, to monitor what our, our student to teacher ratio is and get more, if not more, teachers, more supports in the classrooms for them. And because if we're supporting the, the teachers and the students, everybody is having a better time learning in the classroom and they feel safe and they're making connections with other adults at their school. That, that would be the, the main priority. In addition to, you know, making sure that our elementary, you know, and actually all school reading programs are in, I would also say making sure that we're assisting our school librarians with making sure there's representation of all communities within our school libraries.
Thank you.
So I think we need to focus on direct teaching and instruction. It needs to be the top priority in the budget year after year. This includes curriculum, which thankfully can often be funded through grants. I'm sure it include teachers and direct support staff. Instruction, classroom support staff and those helping our students in areas like mental health are a top priority for student success. And they're a top priority of mine. Again, this should be consistent from year to year. We should all agree on it as a board and we should be moving forward with that. We need to make Ann Arbor an attractive place to teach again. We need to attract and retain great teachers and staff. We need to focus on growth. We all know that that's our downward spiral. For the district, we'll continue to lose students, continue to lose funding. So we need to focus on growth in students and programming, reattracting students and families that have left or have chosen alternatives in our district. And we have to have a long-term focus on the success of the district when we think about budget planning.
Thank you.
The next question for our candidates is, what will be your approach in working with fellow board members, particularly when you disagree?
I love this question. There's, yeah, anyone who's watched a school board meeting, see a lot of disagreements going on. And I think that a focus on what, bringing things back to students and what's, you know, all of the school members, all the school board members, all the candidates here tonight, we're all focused on making things better for our kids. And if we can go back to that baseline and put kind of personal stuff aside and go back to that baseline of working together, collaborating to do what's best for students, working from an area of mutual respect for each other. I'm fortunate, I've been able to sit down and have conversations and coffee and phone calls with the, all the board members who are currently on the board, who will be on the board next year. And I hope to maintain those relationships.
Yeah, an interesting question, you know. One thing I will say is, I don't think it takes a lot of people to look at our board and say that and, and to be able to assess within a short amount of time that trust is broken among the members. And I think when trust is broken among our members, that has a trickle-down effect. And that is why our community does not trust us and why we need to rebuild it back. I think that's a reasonable explanation. In terms of working with board members, part of the reason why I've had some difficulty working with other board members is mainly because it has to do with information sharing. This happened with, when I first got on there and then again, when the board turned in, in 2022. You can't honestly say you're working and collaborating some, with someone when you have some of the information and other members have more of it, then you're not really truly collaborating together. And I think that's where our communication breakdown has, has occurred. I think when something happens at a committee meeting, everyone should know what happened that and they shouldn't have to wait four days to figure out what was discussed and what the perspective of the other members is. So I think it's really about building communication, building that trust and conveying that trust to the community so they can start to trust back.
So I believe that this really goes back to trust. So when tensions are high, there is no trust. And when trust is high, there is no tension. So when you're serving on a board, and again, I currently serve on the Board of Findings, Foundations Preschool. So I have some experience in this area. We don't always agree on every issue. However, we are committed to the same goal and that goal is the success of the preschool. So, and in this case, it's the success of our district. So I intend to apply the same approach as a trustee. Yes, we may disagree, but we can disagree without being disagreeable. We can disagree and still maintain a certain level of civility and professionalism. There's still room to collaborate, negotiate, chat over lunch or coffee for the sake of our students, our teachers and our staff and our community. It's important for me to get out of the way, to get to know, to go out of my way, to get to know a fellow board member. You know, just having in a maybe relaxed atmosphere, again, over lunch or coffee. And I just think that it just gives us a chance to get to know each other and just to talk before a crisis happens. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that there are going to be a lot of discussions that we have as a board, as a board trustee, where we're not necessarily agreeing with our colleagues or other stakeholders. And the big thing that I would bring to the table would, would be to, to listen, to take the emotion out of some of those conversations, but then also share what my opinions are and the facts that I have been presented with. I do think that the collaboration and the sharing that does need to happen so that no one is surprised at the table, so that you're doing the work, you know, before the public meetings and sharing with your colleagues what you have found because we are making decisions that are going to impact our students and, and teaching staff for the next, you know, two, three, four, 10, 20 years with some of the decisions that we're making. So yes, it's, it's got to be respectful and, and listening skills are important.
First and foremost, I'll work to build rapport with my fellow board members. I want to know about their families, what's important to them outside the board, who they are as people. I'll always approach conversation respectfully and with dignity. And that's a value I bring to every interaction I have, whether it's with the janitor that's picking up the garbage or a CEO. I'll be an avid listener and look to understand where they're coming from. I will articulate my point of view and perspective with context so they can understand where I'm coming from. I'll always focus on the student as that should bring commonality in the discussion that we're having and build from that point. Part of being a strong board member is working to build consensus, ensuring that everyone is engaged in the discussion and has a voice at the table. I've worked with multiple boards and have had challenging conversations with many. But a big part of that is just, again, sharing perspective and finding that commonality. And I'll ensure that I come to every board meeting prepared and engaged and ready for discussion.
So this is a really important question. A lot of good answers. One thing that I would really emphasize is listening, you know, listening to your colleagues, understanding their perspective. You don't have to agree with it, but also focusing on how you are serving the students, not a certain way you feel about another person, making disparaging comments, rolling your eyes and just voting against something because somebody else put it up because you're upset or you didn't get a position you wanted and then just not voting on other positions. The community sees that and that goes to lack of trust. So trust is, is a, a big thing as well as communication, but really listening, listening and collaborating and not just coming from your mindset, but from everyone's.
Okay, thank you. Patricia, would you read our next question, please?
Yes, I will. How would you increase transparency and accountability in decision-making as a member of the Board of Education?
Yes, you know, thank you. Thank you for that. You know, one, one thing I've said about before, I'll just use an analogy. You know, when we, I've been, a couple of bond engagement committees this week, yesterday, today, last week, one on Thursday, Thursday. And the question is always asked, will it be a budget on this? And the answer is yes, the budget for the bond stuff will be on the website or it will be organized. And what I'm looking for, I want to see that same sense of transparency and itemization on the general fund bundle as well. Rather than a report that comes out every month that says the date it was passed and where it went to. And I know everyone here has probably seen at least a couple of, of board meetings where in the public commentary, it was mentioned, oh, this amount of money went to Barry's Bagels or this amount of money went to this hotel somewhere. And I couldn't tell you as a trustee what bucket of money that came out. Now, I know legally we have to report an itemized budget using business objects that tracks all those expenses. I just don't see why we can't have that available to the public. And that's something that I, I've been saying for a very long time, something that I think the public deserves and should demand.
Okay, so, so my goal is to be accessible and to serve in the most transparent way possible without violating the privacy of students or district employees. I mean, we have to remember that, that HR issues and personnel files are private. So I don't, I don't know if that's what this question is sort of referring to, but students are entitled to privacy as well. Otherwise, we're opening ourselves up to some type of litigation as a district. So, but I intend to uphold accountability of each other as board members and accountability of the superintendent. And as a board, how are we doing and what do we need to be accountable for? So we, we really need to, you know, hold our feet to the fire as, as board members and to really make sure that we're accountable to our students, to our teachers, to our staff, to our community. Because again, we, we're handling a tremendous budget and we need to make sure that, again, we're holding ourselves accountable and being as transparent as, as legally possible.
Thank you for this. So how I would increase transparency, transparency and accountability, again, holding ourselves responsible or accountable for the decisions that are made, following up. So sometimes these decisions are made, but then the reports on, on new textbooks recently that were purchased or the, the bond plans, the community plans, the, looking at the builders that, you know, messed up Skyline High School and then we had to go back and have insulation re-put in. We, we have to go back and, and follow up to the, to the community. I think making sure that I'm explaining all of the, my reasons for making a decision within the public meetings where those are recorded so that people can go back and see would, would also help.
I, I will share my perspective during open discussions at board meetings, asking engaging questions to get to the, the context, the context of the situation. I'll own the votes I made. I'll own the votes I make and the decisions that are made by the board. Uh once a decision is made, I'll move forward and support the board decision, even if I voted no or disagreed on the approach. That's a huge responsibility of a strong board member. I won't be afraid to say we've gotten something wrong or changing my perspective through discussions. Um you know, we can all learn from one another. We can all grow and change. Um I'll be a good steward to any committee work that I take on. I'll ensure that we highlight the information discussed as part of board reporting and regular board meetings. I'll focus on requesting and disclosing quantitative information and sharing it with the community and making sure we do that consistently and periodically. Uh so we can see trends and I will ask challenging questions throughout my service on the board that highlight the reason we are reaching a certain decision. Thanks.
Again, a lot of great answers, but I have not heard an important one. Why don't we have data about the discipline reports? The equity reports, you know, releasing stuff like that to the public, that's transparency. You know, holding yourself accountable. You are on the board. You didn't see the twenty five million dollars. Yes, that's my fault. And um not looking for excuses or ways to it's this person's fault, it's that person's fault. So holding yourself accountable, but also releasing documents, making um or giving access to the public so they can see some of the stuff that we see that isn't privileged. Obviously, there's private information that shouldn't be shared, but you know, I can guarantee you that more black and brown students are being suspended than others. That needs to be um known, addressed and fixed. So that's, to me, transparency.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo what a lot of folks have already said. There's um sharing of information and not uh not keeping information until board meetings. If there's a, you know, if there's information that can make all of the board members more uh prepared for the meeting and well informed. Um sharing all of that information so we can make uh good decisions when we do come to the table. And then having an open mind to hear the opinions of other people, being ready to change my mind about things, not showing up to a meeting with my mind made up already. And then taking responsibility for those decisions. So if I'm being transparent about the reasons why I make a decision or I vote a certain way. Um and if it turns out to not have the positive impact that we hoped it it would, then I'm gonna take responsibility for that. I'm gonna apologize for that and promise to do better next time. There there might be mistakes that are made and I'll take responsibility for them.
Stacy, you ready for the last? Is Stacy there? I'm just gonna, I'll ask it for her. That's fine. Okay, we have a yes no question and then we're gonna move into audience questions as we can for the next few minutes. Um so we have one that Zan's already identified and there'll be some more coming. So Susannah, hopefully you're ready to like put the order in fast. Okay. So yes, no. Um this is a question from Aspire. If elected, will you commit to meeting with Aspire after the election?
Okay, absolutely. I would commit. As former president of the Districtwide Black Parents Student Support Group, I know the importance um of being of having the ear of the of the school board. So we had allotted time to speak at board meetings and um and I know the importance of that. And I would urge Aspire to to possibly form an alliance with the Districtwide Black Parents Student Support Group to uh to have a greater voice and presence in the board meetings. I know that the this, the the Districtwide Black Parents Student Support Group does have a time on the um docket every, I think, at every board meeting. So I believe that your mission sounds like it aligns closely with that group, with the Black Parents Student Support Group. So rather than have two separate groups, I would suggest, and this is just a suggestion, that you should consider working together and, you know, coming under one umbrella. Um because it sounds like your goals definitely align and you could be definitely, you could be allies. Uh and you could have a greater impact and help a lot more families. Thank you.
Um absolutely, absolutely. I'd actually uh just like to pledge that I would like to meet with you regardless of whether or not I am elected. Um possibly it before the election as well. Um the um the information that both uh A A S P I R E and the Student Advocacy Center have put together was was very helpful for me in learning about um some of the situations that face um our students that I haven't come across yet as a parent um or a member of the community, and I really appreciated it. So absolutely. Thank you so much for what you are doing.
Uh it's a resounding yes from me. Absolutely. I want to meet with the organization. Also hope to partner with organizations such as Aspire, MEJC, uh focusing on on all students and engaging other advisory boards as well. I think we have a lot to learn from one another. Um we can come together and support not only access, but the success of each child in obtaining their full potential for an excellent education in Ann Arbor. I do want to take a few minutes to also mention I am endorsed and supported by the Wasna County Democratic Party, the Nishnabek Caucus of the Michigan Democratic Party, Better Boards, Better Schools, Focus on Education A Two and Planned Parenthood. I'm proud of these organizations and other organizations such as Aspire. I know we share a vision of access to excellent education in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. And I believe I'd be a strong well-rounded candidate with a history of supporting our students and I hope that you'll consider me.
So I believe this is a yes or no question, right? We're we're on that that so absolutely, um I would work with um Aspire if elected. And even if not elected, I still would want to um work with them because I think you guys are doing great work and same with the um, you know, SAC, the MEJC. So absolutely, yes.
I'm also gonna quick, give a quick answer of absolutely yes, and I look forward to doing so.
I will also say yes. Um um as far as Aspire goes, I I've worked with a lot of the folks who are the, I would call the core organizers, that group, even with the, on the advocacy days of the MEJC, um a couple of events uh with Student Advocacy Center, um rallying protest, advocacy days. So the answer is yes for me. It's something I've done. It's what I'll continue to do.
I think we heard from everyone, right? Yeah, cool. Um I'm gonna ask, we try to be like thirty seconds for some of these questions unless it's like, well, at least for the next question. Why? Because I want to get more audience questions. I'm like not trying to be mean, I promise. Okay, so the next question that I saw was, hold on, I just lost it. Shoot, where'd it go? So many people started asking questions that I lost that I just had it. Um, okay. Would you keep information from other board members? That that was a question. So just a quick, like, you know, thirty second response. Thank you.
I think I'm supposed to start for the for this one. Um I I don't see any reason to keep information from the of a fellow board member. I um uh if we're trying to make, I I can't see a reason why I would keep information from a board member. So no.
Um you know, I would work within the bounds of the board. I believe, you know, unless I'm on an executive committee where I'm not supposed to share certain information, I would share information. Part of our responsibility as a board is to collaborate, um you know, collaborate open and public. And so I think sharing information that all members have access to is an extremely important principle to allow for that to happen.
No, I would not keep information. Um it goes to the trust issue and, you know, how do you build trust when you're not trusting information to a colleague and it it just goes against um the whole principle. So absolutely not.
I would not withhold information from fellow board members unless there was something in the governance that um prevented certain things from doing that.
You know, I I would say not only would I not hold information, I would try to get that information to trustees as soon as I could so that they could have just as much time as I could have to consider it before we would potentially meet and discuss it. And I think that's a lot of times uh what has happened. Um and so no, I can't think of a circumstance or a policy uh that would prevent me from sharing information with trustees to help them be the best trustees that they could.
Uh I would not withhold information from other trustees. Again, we're trying to create a an environment, a climate of trust, a climate that that displays a collaborative effort. I mean, we're aiming for the same goal and the goal is the district, our students, our teachers, our staff. And I I can't think of any reason why a trustee would withhold information from a from a fellow trustee. We're we're a team and there's no I in team. So I I just, if we're working as a team, we're not withholding information and we're working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Um there's a que- I'm not doing this in order audience because some of it's been slightly addressed. So there's one issue that hasn't been addressed and I'll come back to the other one. So don't worry. I'm seeing all the questions. Um, do you feel a resolution focusing on divisive foreign policy is an appropriate use of the school board's time?
Uh ab- absolutely not. I don't think um, you know, resolutions or or things that the the board can't have a viable impact on are things that the board should be focused on. There's a lot of uh board work that needs to take place. You know, we we were in a a budget deficit, twenty five million dollar shortfall immediately after and we should have been dedicated to focusing that time on the the business of the board.
Yeah, no, I mean, no, uh absolutely not. Um you know, there's a lot of time spent on, you know, foreign policy issues and um stuff when we are had a budget deficit. We had stuff going on in the Amber schools that wasn't being addressed. So um no, I think um it's a waste of the taxpayer, it's a waste of student, parent, teachers and the board's time.
I don't think it was the best use of board time. I think there could have been some time spent getting input from all the stakeholders for that kind of thing. And then maybe revisiting it in a shorter time period. But um I don't think it was the best use of board time, no.
I stand by my decision. Um I believe in the sanctity of human life. That's what the decision was for. And to say that decisions that happen and things that are going on uh across the world don't affect us and our students and how our students take in and process that information, I think just tells me that maybe a lot of people haven't been around students um a whole lot because they react to us. They react to what they see in the media and when you don't say anything about it, uh that's just like turning your back to it, in my view. I don't think it was a waste of time. Was it divisive in our community? Uh yes, I I will say that. Um but things like this are divisive everywhere. Um so to 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 expect that um we don't have that in our community and that we can't recognize that this is a real world situation that actually talks about real lives and student lives also. I think um, yeah, I'll just say it like that. I stand by my decision.
Okay, let me make one thing clear. I too believe in the sanctity of life. But I don't believe we needed to focus on a ceasefire resolution when we were facing a fiscal crisis within our district where we were facing having to lay off several, many teachers, at least, you know, a lot of teachers. Thankfully, we were able to call three of those teachers back. And we were also focused on a ceasefire resolution in the middle of firing our superintendent. So I believe that we need to keep our focus on our students, on our teachers, on our district. We have a lot of work to do. And again, I believe in the sanctity of life and I'm just not happy with how this issue caused so much divisiveness within our district. There are students struggling on both sides of this issue and I feel as though the board introduced another issue that students have yet to deal with. So, thank you.
No, it was not a resolution on the uh topic was not the best use of time uh for the board. And I'll stop there.
Thanks. I'm gonna ask one more question, just in honor of our time. Um my little dachshund came to join us. So excited to be part of the candidate. Um and I want to thank everyone. Um and I'm putting a link in the chat about how to get more involved because the things that we're talking about require um folks to be active. Um so the the last question, I'm kind of gonna combine a couple. How, we didn't really talk about how you might hold the administration accountable. We talked about kind of lack of information. So how might you hold the administration accountable um for what you need, for this transparency, things like that? And then how might you be promoting collaboration um within the school board? So let's give people a minute, Sarah, um which will get us a little bit over, but I just want to give you that last minute. I hope people will stay on. Um and yeah, that question makes or how would you hold administration accountable and build collaboration with with?
Well, you know, um there's the evaluation process um is is one way, but asking questions um when things, when you're not given information or you're not given documents, speaking out, saying, you know, I don't have this document. We as a board don't have this document. Why don't we have this? Um but just sitting silently and, you know, saying, well, I don't have the information. Oh, well, um is not holding the administration accountable. Um you know, and and making sure that when we are evaluating a superintendent or staff, it is collaborative, but the evaluation is clear. You have specific goals. Um and I I feel like um if we're not going to have a process to evaluate administration, then it doesn't look good when we make decisions about administration.
This, we could answer this in a number of different ways. I'll focus on um it from an equity standpoint. If we had something in mind in place, like an equity scorecard, where there were actual metrics in place that then we could measure how the impact had been done in different places. I know that there's been talk about instituting this equity scorecard and we've gotten kind of some movement on it and then it ebbs back and but if we can get that in place, then that'll give us something solid to measure and it'll give us a data perspective to be able to hold administration accountable for that kind of thing.
Just to repeat the question, since it's not in the chat, this is how we would call um superintendent administration um accountable. One thing I will say is that we do have a superintendent tool. Uh it has changed this year, so this will be the first time anyone in the state of Michigan has been using it. It changed from a four-tiered system to a three-tiered rubric system, which means that uh it's a, you you have to delineate a little more where your superintendent falls. So before you could have fell in a three, four category. Now you're gonna fall in a in a in a one, two or three category, which, you know, if if you've used rubric scales before, you know, that the spots for improvement um definitely are identified. So I think the tool is the right and responsible way to hold a superintendent evaluation. Um well, to hold them accountable through the evaluation, but again, that has changed. So even with our current superintendent, uh we'll also be adding a legal legally required to add now a mid-year review. So that will also change a little bit. So how we evaluate a su- a superintendent and hold them accountable is definitely through the tool. But for a board to hold uh to ask uh information or reports, um it takes a whole board to do that. It can't just be one or two screaming members uh demanding something and that's what it feels like it's been for me personally.
Okay, so in order to be able to hold um administrators accountable, we need to, again, have some type of evaluation, solid evaluation process in place. Um a way to, again, measure whether or not they're actually meeting those standards. I know as a teacher, we were evaluated, we had a rubric, we had ways of determining whether or not we were actually meeting those goals. And I think that the administrators need to be aware of what those goals are. And I think that the administrators need to be aware of what those goals are in terms of equity. Uh, we currently do have an equity plan, and again, I'm not currently on the board. And so I'm just sort of giving, getting this information secondhand, but there has been talk of having an equity audit, and I don't know if SAC is aware of that or if anyone on this uh Zoom call is aware of that, but that is definitely something that I think that we need to, to pursue, to examine further. I know there's been talk about a DEI officer. But with the current state of our budget, that may not be feasible, but let's take a look at what we currently have and how we can use it and make it more robust so that it can actually work for our district.
So for, in, in order for us to, to hold um the administration and the superintendent accountable, um, they need to have um, not only the, the rubric, but they need to set what their goals are. The board, uh, the superintendent needs to set the goals for what uh Superintendent Park's goals are for her to achieve uh and for them to review against as well. And the board needs to have set goals for themselves and what they would like to accomplish this year, um, as well as the goals for the superintendent. Um, the process was, the, the process was trained in August, but I don't know that those goals have been set yet. Um, but as soon as they are, I hope that they are made public um to the community um so that we can help send in our public commentary um and, and be a part of that review process as well.
We need to be very clear on our vision for the district and setting expectations for administration. Uh, we need to systematically track initiatives and questions and requests of the administration to make sure they're actively followed up on and, and resolved in a timely manner. As board members, it's our responsibility to evaluate the top administrator, but ultimately, you know, our superintendent is accountable for the full administration. We do need to set goals for the superintendent and again, set clear expectations for that evaluation process. And, and once again, I'll focus on hearing from the community. So we want to hear from students and families, uh, teachers and staffs, teachers and staff, and even those within the administration. We want to understand the culture and climate from these various perspectives and making sure that they're aligning with the strategic vision of the district and how we want to be represented as a community here in the Ann Arbor Public Schools.
Thanks so much, folks, for sticking around a few minutes later so we could get a few of those audience questions. I really appreciate it. I'm so grateful for Aspire and many of our caregivers, our young people contributed to these questions. They weren't just randomly picked. Um, so grateful for all the participation. Thank you, um, candidates for being willing to be um coming and spending time with us and, and being open to public service. It's a high calling for sure. Um, and our school district certainly needs wise um leaders at this time. Um, so we look forward to continued conversation. So those who, who are still here, um, remember to vote. Um, we put, we put those links out. We will have these videos up as soon as I can do that um and share them out and encourage other people to vote with an education justice lens um as they're voting. Like, you know, the presidential election gets a lot of um airtime right now if you turn on the TV, but the, these races um impact our local community so much and they're so important. So make sure you're having those conversations with your neighbors. If you know people that live in Ipsy or Lincoln, those candidate forums are coming up in um October, and I'll put the link one more time. We really hope you will um stay involved, think about the ways that you can get um, oh, sorry, it already happened. Um, how you can stay involved. We do an advocacy day in Lansing um and more and more folks are coming to really talk about um how we have school funding um in a more equitable way in our state. Um, and the more voices we have in that conversation, um, the better. So I hope you'll think about how you can be involved in these larger conversations that deeply impact what happens, right, in Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti and all these other places, right? Um, joining together. So thank you so much. We're so grateful for everyone here. I hope you have a great night. Thanks for the-
I want to say before you hang up, a big special thank you to Perry Stone Palmquist for all the time and consideration she put into developing this. Also, she was aided by Lydia Goff and, and Aspire. We had Susannah Keller, Sarah Saylor, and um um, we also had other members who helped with the questions. And then tonight, we have Patricia Davis and Turo and Caitlin Solar who asked questions as well. So thank you all for giving your time and energy and thank you for your uh active participation. We love you.
Thank you, Stacy. Thanks, everybody.